All right. Good evening. We are going to call the City Council City Manager Work Session Meeting to Order. And Byron, on the digital agenda, it has Retail Strategies update first. Did you want that one first? We're going to go Amazon, the Amazon Web Services Community Engagement Update. Okay.
Kay Davis is here. Our guest speaker again.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Yes. And thank you to Josh. It's pretty great when you can be a guest speaker and bring another guest speaker. So I worked that one out pretty well. So we do have a couple of slides. Really appreciate the opportunity to come this evening. As many of you know, I was here about a year ago, and I remember Mayor Dratsman you saying, don't take your foot off the gas, keep going. And so that's one of the reasons why I wanted to come back, share an update about what we've been doing in our engagement with the city of Hermiston. And we'll also have Josh share a little bit more about a partnership that was really not just AWS and the Heroes team, but also the city as well. So go ahead and do next. Oh, I have control right here. Oh, yeah. Perfect. Okay, perfect. So always want to start off and just do kind of a high level economic impact of AWS in Yumitila County. This is our updated data as of 2023. So 12.5 billion in capital and operating investments. We have just over 2,000 full-time equivalent positions that we help support here in Yumitila County, 20.8 million that we paid between tax and fee payments to Yumitila County in 2023 alone. And then we are very proud of being the largest taxpayer here in Yumitila County. But one of the things that I know we're most proud of, in addition to our economic impacts, is giving back to the community. That's something that we've learned how to listen and be more engaged over the years. And so what I wanted to do is to share a couple of slides of some of our engagement over this last year. We've were helping to support the the new library multicultural center that we're very excited about, the new pickleball courts that are coming to town. I'm still determined I'm going to learn how to play at some point. The fire department's new education trailer that they are getting ready to get going. Of course, the Goth Bay House Backpack Program and Martha's House Stepping Stones Alliance. And then we continue to do the scholarship program for Blue Mountain Community College. And so I also just wanted to share, we talk a lot about our collaboration with our education institutions, but this really speaks to the success of those programs and the number of students that are getting placed, most of them with AWS after they complete that training. So for the 2023-24 school year, all but two students that went through that program received job placements. For 22 and 23, all students that were looking for a job got placed. And 21 and 22, everyone was able to get placed as well. So this was actually in an email. I asked Pete Herberg if I could share it, just because I thought that it was a pretty powerful statement. But he said, seeing my students find jobs and launch their careers is truly the very best part of my work. I'm immensely grateful to AWS for their longstanding and generous support of our students. And so this is something that we're continuing to partner with Blue Mountain Community College on some upscaling opportunities as well. But it's been very, very successful over the years. Finally, Yumitila County Fair. I have to take a minute and pause to explain. On the right-hand side, that photo is my dining room table. Going to get the mail in September and August for me was the most enjoyable. It's usually just bills and I don't enjoy going, but I got over 300 thank you cards from kids across Yumitila County who received a bump during the livestock show. And so that was something that was really special to be able to read all of their notes. I have one of them up there, but really meant a lot to be able to have a positive impact on so many families here in Yumitila County. We also helped with the barn expansion. That was something that we had heard. There was a big need. There wasn't enough room for animals. And so we were very excited to help support that. We're also a large sponsor for Farm City Perodeo this year. I know, Brandon, thank you for all of your help with the Arbor Day Tree donation up at Eotech. And then we also had an opportunity to support the Hero Sports Complex. So I want to pause and let Josh just share a little bit more about that. And then we have a short video that we wanted to share as well.
Thanks, Kaylee, and thanks, Council and staff. I, Kaylee called and asked if I would give just a couple of minutes on background for the Hero Sports Project. And I know that our council members are all probably familiar. Thank you. I'm really leaning into this. And but I wanted to share a little bit about the project. So I think most know, but we started this in late 2022. There were six of us dads who said, you know, we need this in our area. And this being a sports complex, we approached the City Council in October of 2022 and presented our idea and were given the green light to move forward as a community funded project. And you all know our community, but it is one of the most humbling and awe inspiring experiences to get to go out and raise funds for a project like this in our community, because the outpouring of support was immense. And I know I'm preaching to the choir, so to speak. But this was my first time really in an effort like this. And I was amazed, both in passion and kind support that we received. We wanted to do our project in a phased approach, so that we could actually use it before it was complete. And so Phase One was, you know, getting the fields leveled, the grass planted, and things ready just to have fields. That happened within a couple of months. Phase Two was securing enough funds to put up at least two of the fields lights. And so that's what we were able to do. We had all of the infrastructure in place, all the light posts, all the conduit. And really, the lighting is the most expensive part of our project. And our commitment from day one to the city, if you remember, is that we want this to be an absolute asset and not a liability or a burden. So we've gone with very high end products for anything that we're purchasing. These lights come with a 25-year warranty. And the company we purchased them from, they remote monitor the lights. So even if a bulb starts to burn out, they're LEDs, so not a bulb, if a light emitting diode starts to burn out, they recognize that and they call us and say, hey, you need, we need to change this light out. And then they pay for a contractor to come and take care of that for us. So just sharing that with you as an example of our intent to make this something that's really a benefit to our community beyond just using it for sports fields. I do want to give a quick shout out to Brandon and his team at Parks and Rec, who have been phenomenal to work with and continue to help us as we approach Phase Three, which is to finish raising funds to light the remainder of the fields and to purchase really nice restroom facilities. The, you know, you've been to a wedding or an event venue where they have the mobile trailers that are very nice, much nicer than, you know, port of potty facility. So that's what we want. But back to AWS, we called Kaylee and said, here's what our project is. And she said, how can we support? What does that look like? And we told her what our need was. And the immediate response was, sure, of course, we're going to help. Let me get back to you on what a number looks like. And we were blown away by what that number was. And she mentioned the video. We'll share that with you here. But I just want to say, from the beginning, they've been a wonderful partner to work with, and we're extremely grateful for their support. And without it, we would not have been able to put those lights up for Phase Two. And the use that we've been able to get now from that has extended the use of the fields greatly. So super grateful and thank you very much.
So this is a one-minute video, so real quick.
I was in the military and I can remember training, looking around and being able to pick out the kids around me who had been part of a team and who had worked for something bigger than themselves and who had to understand teamwork and who weren't just focused on their own goals. Being able to pick yourself up is one thing, but being able to help somebody else out when they're facing a tough time is also really important. So sports, to me, is just such an important way for kids to start to develop character. We're all dads of travel sports kids. And so we've been around the Northwest, the different venues and cities. And we just kept asking ourselves, why can't we have something like this here? We asked the city of Hermiston, we've got this great property out there. Can we convert that into a sports complex through a community funded program, then then gift it back to you? The city agreed. We got the green light. And that's when we really started trying to build this thing. So without contributions from our local businesses, none of this would have been possible. I've never lived in a community where people were so willing to help out when they saw a need. And that echoes across our business community, our farmers and ranchers. Amazon Web Services, they led the charge and donated $300,000 so that we could get lights put in place. And they're out there practicing under those lights right now. It's truly been amazing.
So I'll caveat that with, if you ever need a spokesperson for a video, you know who to go to, because he does a pretty dang good job. So last but not least, just wanted to share a couple of quick updates. Most of you are familiar with our Change X Community Fund. This was something that we started a couple of years ago, just to make sure that in addition to supporting organizations in the community, we wanted to make sure that there was a pot of funding available for organizations if they either need to expand their work or have a new idea and they want to do something great in the community, that there's money to do that. One of the problems was that funding opened once a year, never failed. Usually, within a couple of weeks after that closed, I would get outreach from somebody saying, hey, I'm interested in applying for the Change X Fund. And I'd say, and, you know, eight months, come back to us and it'll open again. And I hated having that conversation. And so one of the big changes that we made this year is we added an additional $50,000 to the fund. But we're opening it twice a year consistently. That was the other thing that we wanted to make sure that organizations knew. Every year on January 1 and July 1, this funding will be open for applications. And so it'll be consistent. And they'll know every year at that time it's available. We have other organizations that do grants every year. And I think that's one of the reasons why they've been so successful, is that consistency. The other thing that we started doing is trying to provide highlight videos. Selfishly, for us, it's great for other organizations in Hermiston to see, hey, this is how they're using the funding that they got. They know what it's being used for in the local community. But also, in addition to that, it's a helpful tool. Most of these nonprofit organizations do not have funding to go out and do their own marketing. And so we give them the video. It's done for free. And they can use that as they wish to help promote and hopefully apply for additional funding to support their, their organization. So I have one more video. It's very short, about a minute. And then I will wrap up. But this one specifically was on Pacific Northwest Veterans Alliance. Nope. Maybe not. We'll see if I. Okay, so we'll, I'll follow up after the Pacific Northwest Veterans Alliance video. But we did a number of them for organizations here in the Hermiston area. So last, oh, is it?
My name is Shannon White, and I represent Pacific Northwest Veterans Alliance. We have collaborated with AWS Change X to provide essential services for homeless veterans in the local community. We saw a need for this project in the community because we had a lot of homeless veterans who were not receiving essential services. So we've identified gaps and resources, and we were able to provide the resources to get them on the right track to find permanent, sustainable housing. We've been able to provide homeless kits to veterans with support of the project. So we can provide essential hygiene kits, clothing, food cards, gas cards, and resource connection to local community partners. We partner with local hotels in the community, and they work with us to be able to provide veterans housing. So community support has been incredible in the whole process.
The impact you have on that person that maybe is giving up, or feels like there's no one that really cares, we're able to say, hey, listen, you're not alone. You're not the only one there. We want to see you do better. We want to see you improve. We want to show that we do care. We're here because maybe you think people don't.
We would encourage other organizations to apply for the grant funds. You can create a positive impact to the community through AWS Change X.
So again, just one example of an organization. But as everybody in this room knows, there's some amazing organizations here in Hermiston. And so we're just excited to help support what they're doing and hopefully allow them to expand their, their services. So last but not least, great alternatives. Many of you maybe saw the, the press release at the beginning of the year, but we're so excited. This is a rooftop solar project, 25 kilowatt, each focused on organizations to reduce their energy bill. And so we want that money to go back into the community. If it's a food pantry, we want them to spend that funding on additional food. We know a lot of organizations have been hit hard recently. And so the whole goal of this is to create a pilot program for renewable energy that's going to help lower the cost for these organizations. I wish I could tell you exactly which organizations in Hermiston are part of this pilot project, but we will very soon in the next week or two. But there are three Hermiston organizations that are part of that. So there's no cost to participate in the program. All maintenance is provided by grid. And there are the solar systems are completely owned by the organizations. And so it's something that we're really excited about to kickstart. And Eastern Oregon is the first area where we're piloting this program. So with that, love to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'll let you get on with the meeting this evening.
Counsel, any questions? Yes.
Well, not a question, but more of accolades. Thank you for doing this presentation and showing us how AWS is working, you know, with the community to benefit all. Sometimes, we know that AWS gets some negative publicity. But it's nice to see how well you are trying to integrate yourselves to benefit not just one community, but, you know, you're working with the Veterans Alliance, you're working with the sports complex that affects a lot of youth, and you're doing other projects. So thank you for the work that you guys are doing and for showing us the videos too. I think you're right, it speaks volumes. It's one thing to hear about it and to hear numbers, but it's another to see how it's benefiting the community. So I love the video idea.
Thank you.
Kaylee, appreciate you coming and giving us another update. I concur with Counselor Dron. Amazon takes a lot of heat sometimes about coming in and taking resources, whether that's electrical or water or workforce. And you could, you know, easily walk away and take that money to the bank. And you're reinvesting in our community and finding ways to contribute beyond the huge amount of tax dollars you're already paying to all of our agencies. But also, you know, helping other businesses to thrive and contribute to organizations that are important to our community that help us, you know, create our community feel. And that's super important. And I hope that continues to be a part of your mission and your drive as you continue to expand and grow in our region. It's important that AWS partners with us in those resources and helping us to continue to provide this, you know, community resources it needs to make this a home that we all want to live in. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you again. I really appreciate the opportunity. And thank you, Josh. So more to come. You'll see more of the next couple of months. I wish I could share now, but we're not done.
Awesome. Josh, always good to see you. Thanks for coming. All right, Byron, Retail Strategies update.
Yes, so we have here tonight with us Brooke Hill and John Mark Boozer from Retail Strategies. They've been a partner of the cities for, you know, they might know more exactly, but a few years now, helping us work on attracting retail, particularly development, to the city. And they're just going to give us an overview. They come out and see us once a year. And so I asked that they come on the council meeting so we could get an update from them. So I'll turn the time over to them.
Welcome.
Thanks, Byron. And thank you, Mayor, council members, for giving us the opportunity to present this evening. We are excited to be back in Hermiston.
Is your microphone on? Should be like right there. That did work.
Thank you.
Maybe pull it a little closer to you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I am Brooke Hill, and this is my colleague, John Mark Boozer. And we are your local team for, from Retail Strategies, representing Hermiston. So Retail Strategies for over a decade has served as a full-service advisory firm for cities on the hat, or as an extension of the Economic Development Team specializing in national retail recruitment. So we serve as a commercial broker to the city, talking to local property owners, as well as national tenant representatives. And we have that retail real estate mindset, but with the fiduciary responsibility to the city. And a little bit on our process. So we start with the data and demographics. And what this does is it helps us understand the city of Hermiston from a retail lens. We spend or we invest over $200,000 annually as a company on GIS research and subscription-based services. And that is something that the city of Hermiston also has access to through our partnership. We call, we're basically a research concierge service as well. So we look at the market from how retailers view it, whether it's drive times, miles from radius rings with the miles, and also following the initial data, we do a boots-on-the-ground tour. So as Byron mentioned, we come out every year annually, and we drive the market from our retail lens. So we look at the local assets, retail assets. So what existing retailers here, what opportunities are there, either on-market or off-market? And we also explore like higher, better use opportunities. So we catalog all of this, and we keep track of that. And when we are conducting our retail outreach, we're able to send sites in the market. We also represent Hermiston at trade shows throughout the year. And then we'll touch on that a little bit more. But we also have a pleasant persistence is what we like to call our method. We are constantly chirping in the ears of these national retailers on behalf of Hermiston. So it is, retail is a slow game. It is, we are constantly following expansion priorities for these cities. So we are constantly, hey, this site's available, this changed. And if and when the opportunity comes, we want, through our outreach, Hermiston to be at the top of their list when they're looking in Eastern Oregon. And all of that to say, we are an extension of the Economic Development Team. So we are working on behalf of Hermiston. We are representing them in all of our meetings. And we are leveraging our personal relationships with these people in the retail real estate industry to really just help move the needle of national recruitment, retail recruitment in Hermiston, and help facilitate conversations that may or may not have otherwise taken place. So we just retail matchmaking. We like to get all the important players to the table and let them take it from there. And so a little bit more on our process now in depth. So we mentioned the data and demographics. This is how I would, Hermiston, population of 20,322, and that's the city boundary. And that's probably how most people, if they were just to Google Hermiston, it's like, what's the population? What's, what's the city boundary look like? However, that's not how retailers, retailers view the market. Maybe? So how retailers see it, they use radius rings and drive times. So each of these radius rings, the red, the blue, and the yellow represent three, five, and 10-mile radius rings. And what that is, is retailers want to know, how fast can they get to your cash register? That is kind of how, where they're determining where to expand, where to locate, how fast can they get there? So you can see that from the three-mile radius ring, the population increased, and then it continues to grow with the five and 10-mile, and the same thing as the drive time. The zero to five-minute drive time doesn't include the whole city, but the 10-minute and 15-minute grow the population substantially. And then we also create a customized trade area. And what this says is we use mobile tracking data. For this instance, we use the Hermiston Walmart. And most national retailers have a geofence, which is it pings your cell phone when you go into the store. And then when you leave, it kind of determines where your evening hours are. So it determines that is your home location. And from there, they can determine how far are people, where are your shoppers coming in from? So if you see on the right, the heat map, that was from Walmart. So those are all, the darker the area, the more concentrated the shoppers are. And then, so that interesting polygon is the customized trade area. And taking all of that into consideration for Hermiston, the population has grown from the 20,000 to that 52,699 is the estimated 2024 population. And it also increased the median household income. And then it's got a projected 2027 number. So when we are reaching out to retailers, we can present them with this info as well, because it is a long game. So having, looking at that customized trade area, the drive times, the radius rings, as well as the custom trade area, they are able to then determine expansion priorities. And so we also ran a leakage report. And what this showed us was there's a $125 million opportunity gap. And that is money that is leaving Hermiston that could be captured if there were other retailers in the market. And so I mentioned our boots-on-the-ground tour. And that is when we come and we make the initial catalog of all existing retail development opportunities and catalog it here. So we keep a running list of this. We update it. And with a legacy client like Hermiston, it's always interesting when we come each year to see what's changed, if there's anything new on the market. And again, we're also calling property owners and talking to them to see if there might be an off-market opportunity and just really keeping this up to date as retail's always evolving and changing. And we want to be able to have any site available to send. And so from that, Highway 395, that corridor is our main zone of focus, because that is where all the existing national retail is, synergy. And retailers are sheep. They all like to be near each other. They enjoy co-tenancy. And so we have been focusing, we have been talking with Byron Mark, and we reach out to local property owners. We also help facilitate conversations with national tenant reps, brokers, developers, and anybody just trying to, again, get everyone to meet on what opportunities are in Hermiston that may or may, may go unnoticed by people that are either doing business not locally or larger companies nationally. And so we are just constantly in our meetings at trade shows and in our outreach, reaching out to keep the market in front of their eyes. And John Mark is going to walk through this retail timeline.
Yeah, absolutely. So I kind of call this intro to retail real estate. I'm an absolute real estate nerd. I can talk about this one slide for about an hour and a half. I'm obviously not going to do that here. But um, but I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. If anyone would like to discuss further, we're happy to do that because I love educating and teaching people. But essentially, this shows the, what we call the retail timeline. And so so many people will think, oh, hey, this business, this drive-through business just happened to show up here. Woo, it took so quick, it's done. But there's really tons of background and tons of work done before permits are pulled or anything along those lines toward an opening. So starting on the far left, you have investors. And a company is either privately owned or publicly owned and traded on the stock market. So you have these investors, they essentially have to decide, okay, how are we going to grow? Are we going to grow by growing our same-store sales? Or are we going to open new locations? It's a lot easier to open new locations, believe it or not. So from there, the investors will decide what they want to do. It'll go through Wall Street if it's publicly traded, otherwise it's private. They'll go to a real estate director. And it's usually different tiers depending on the company. You'll have a national, you'll have regional real estate directors. And they'll usually be broken up by areas. So you might have somebody that covers just Oregon, or someone that covers Washington and Oregon, or someone that covers California, Oregon, Washington, whatever it may be. Those real estate directors will partner with a local tenant representative. And so a tenant representative is basically a buyer's agent. So if you are somebody looking to buy a home, it's kind of the same idea. It's a representative of the retailer that has a real estate license that can help facilitate and legally do these deals. And this is right about where we usually come in. We speak with real estate directors on the national level, on the regional level. And then we also speak and work with local tenant representatives. Every company's different. Sometimes we'll just work with the real estate director. Sometimes we'll just work with a tenant representative, sometimes both. It just depends. We come in around here, and from there, the real estate director and the tenant representative will start to identify markets that are fits for them. What's our population? What is our desired household income? Traffic numbers, growth, industry, et cetera. They'll identify these markets from there. From there, they will identify sites within the markets. Do we need one acre? Do we need two? Do we need a light? Do we need something zone this, or something zone this, those sorts of things? And this is where we really add a lot of value, because in our partnership with the city, we're able to really know the inner workings of so many retail sites that are going on, who the players are, are they listed, are they not listed? If they're not listed, they're not being marketed. And if they're not being marketed, then they're hard to find. No one's going to find them. And so we're able to essentially act on behalf of the city and publicize and share these sites when appropriate and applicable. From there, they'll find sites, a tenant representative will present it to a real estate director, they'll run a pro forma, which is basically a budget. Is this going to be profitable? Is this in our budget? Can we afford this, et cetera? How much would a build out be? If everything lines up, they'll do an LOI or a letter of intent. And as you can see, that's already about two years in. So many of these retailers will identify these growth projections. And it won't, it'll take one, two years to really get them in motion. And whenever an LOI goes out, a letter of intent, that's usually the signal of the beginning of a trillion things that can go wrong. And so you see how far in the process we are. And that's really the first step of how many things can go wrong. And so you see how far in the process we are. And that's really the first step of how many things can go wrong. From site work to zoning, to budget, to restrictions, to everything else. But a letter of intent ties up the site. It'll go to a real estate committee at the retailer level. They will vote on it, they'll discuss it. If they decide to move forward, they'll either do a lease or purchase, depending on the retailer. Some like to purchase, some only like to lease. If it is a purchase or a lease, depending on the site, a developer will come into play. That can either be somebody that already owns it or someone that builds or redevelops on behalf of the retailer. They'll come in, they'll run all their numbers, they'll type, they'll have the site tied up. And then from there, it will be built out to their specifications, again, ground up or redeveloped. And then eventually it'll be opened. And so again, I can talk about this for a long time, going to all the nuances and everything. But that's basically how long and how real estate works. I've seen this be compressed to a year and I've seen this be taken up to five, six years. I mean, there have been situations where I've seen simple Dutch brothers take five years to open. And so, but it's a really good example of just how long real estate, retail real estate deals take and how we are continually working alongside the city in every process that we can possibly be to help continue conversations and have the city of Hermiston at the top of all of these retailers list.
And so after we've done all of the data, we started doing outreach and we start getting feedback. We start getting active retail interest and Hermiston has some positive momentum due to the nature of these still being ongoing. We cannot share the retailer names, but rather a generalized concept. So there is a grocery user who is in market review in the region. There's also an outdoor retailer who is reviewing sites. There's a cellular provider who's also reviewing sites. There is a chicken fast casual restaurant that is reviewing sites. And then a Mexican quick service restaurant is in site, they are in negotiations on a site.
And I just want to make a quick note that as Brooke said, our main focus is the national retail. And that is part of why our main focus is on Highway 395 is that is the national retail corridor. But all of these retailers are national retail users, national credit tenants, people that have larger, larger footprints across the nation because it is very streamlined, it's very corporate, very official. And so that's our main focus.
And back to the timeline on the slide before this, these are all actively, they're actively interested in the market and they are all just at varying points in that timeline that we shared previously. And some of the past retail success, success we've had in the city of Hermiston. Our team helped with the When Pay Less closed, getting that refilled and Sherman Williams now locating there as Marshalls and Grocery Outlet throughout our partnership. And then this is back into the recruitment phase. So as we're doing our continuous outreach, like I said, we also attend conferences on behalf of the city of Hermiston. So company wide, our team spends, attends 15 plus conferences and those are across America. Regionally, John Mark and I attend two to three shows a year. The big marquee show for retail real estate is every spring and it is a huge national show. And then we just attended ICSC Western a few weeks ago. And that is the premier Western show. So that's where you get a lot of the retailers that are specifically looking to grow in the Western region of the United States. And ICSC, we have a great relationship with them. One, our company president is actually on the board of trustees. So we get a lot of their reports. And so we supply all of that as well. And how we communicate our progress, we use Basecamp to communicate with Mark and Byron. And it is an online messaging platform. That's where all of our updates are going. That's where all of our reports are going and. And we also have quarterly business reviews. So every quarter we will send its national trends, local headlines, and then any of the ongoing business. It's just a concise document that we can review everything that has gone on during the previous quarter. And so it is continued outreach. We, again, the needle on who's expanding, what properties are available. It's a constantly moving target. So we are always reaching out, following up on leads, reaching out to new property owners, reconnecting with a property owner who may or may not have been interested a year ago or a retailer who said, maybe if housing developments have changed or anything that we can supply to these retailers. Because again, we are looking to move the needle on the national retail in Hermiston. And anything we can do to keep the city and the market in front of these retailers. So we will just continually check in and collaborate with our team here. Thank you. That is all for us. And if there are any questions?
Thank you, Brooke and John Mark, right?
Right, yes.
So what are some things that we as a community could be doing to make ourselves more appealing on the retail standpoint? Are there things that you come back from retailers with and say, hey, if they had this, I'd be interested? Or if they did this, I would be interested? Do you provide us with that feedback so that our economic development team can kind of go to work on those sort of things?
Yes, we do. And that's another great part of our partnership is we've found just across the company, the retailers are a lot more candid in their feedback with us than they would be with somebody from the city. So we will always report that back and it could be a various number of, we've had the people aren't expanding in Oregon right now. Or it could be population restraints, or it could be if it's a franchise, a franchise location and there's not an operator in the region. We run into that a lot where they're corporate wants to be in Hermiston, but they're, we don't have a operator or a franchisee for that region. And so we will work to either find a local franchisee and see, but there are, as far as feedback, we will get everything and pass it along to Mark and Byron whenever we get. And if it's something where that's a site question or anything, and that's another good thing. We can facilitate, we have a great communication system. So it kind of streamlines for the retailer having to figure out who to get in touch with and the same thing for us. If there's something that the city needs or and we're able to pretty immediately get it to the right person.
Mark, you get feedback from them on a regular basis that's valuable and things that maybe the council should be addressing?
As far as from the regional strategies folks? Yeah, I mean, I think we, it's a, what I tell everybody whenever I'm out presenting into the community is treat them like city staff. Cause I've kind of viewed them like they're our city staff just located in another state somewhere else. But they're like an extension of our staff, more or less. So we work really closely in terms of communicating back and forth whenever a question comes up. You know, I reach out to them and they're instantly back to us with whatever that information is. And whenever they have a question that comes up, hey, we heard, you know, from XYZ, you know, outfit that's looking for an area. But for the most part, they, you know, know a lot more about some of the properties than even I do. Because that's where a lot of them being an extension of city staff comes in is it's a lot of work to keep track of all the various property owners in town and where they're at on various, you know, things going on in their lives. Maybe there's been a, you know, a death in the family and now the property is owned in a, a trust and, you know, all those types of things. And so that's one of the things that the retail strategies really does a good job of for us is keeping track of all of those things so that they're aware when a company starts looking around, you know, they can direct them directly to that property owner. And if they don't know, that's when they'll reach out to us and ask a question. We can kind of put them in contact with the local contact.
So I've always wondered, you know, how many clients do you represent? And is Hermiston just one of a thousand clients? And are we, you know, top of the mind awareness? Or we just kind of, oh, they just happen to want to move to Hermiston? So we, you know, I mean, how do you, how do you represent us in those conversations?
Yeah. So we as a company represent about 180 cities across 40 states. And Brooke and I represent 18 clients across four states at the moment. And so we really have a really good ratio of clients to, to us too, especially for the West Coast. I think as far as discussing people and making sure that Hermiston is top of mind, we really do make sure that through our discussions and through our outreach to various retailers, a lot of these real estate directors will cover various regions. And so we do make sure not to hide or to, to, you know, we do make sure to keep Hermiston top of mind when we're reaching out to people. And it, and it really is site specific with, as far as these retailers. You know, if there is a site that they need or a site that they want, I will know what sites to put in front of them as an active deal versus just wasting everybody's time and not making, and not, and not putting something in front of someone that might not be a fit. And so as far as that, there are a lot of different people that someone just covers Oregon, someone just covers California, someone just covers Washington, whatever. But we really make sure to keep Hermiston top of mind. And as far as, you know, we have wonderful communications with, with Mark and Byron. And they're really good at giving us good information and helping us get good sites to put in front of retailers. And that makes it most easy because these retailers and these brokers, they get paid based on the deals they do. And so if we can provide value to these people and say, hey, here are these sites, here are these deals that could be done. It's, it'll, it kind of streamlines and makes things go a lot quicker. And I think we're able to successfully do that here.
So there aren't situations where you have communities that are essentially competing for the same interested development? Do you know what I mean? Like Pendleton or Hermiston or Pasco and Hermiston?
No.
You know, another similar sized city to Hermiston where, you know, how do I pick and choose which one to recommend?
No. And in all honesty, it, it can be both as, as well as, we don't, we don't represent any immediate vicinity cities that would compete. But there is actually strength in having cities in an area because it makes us more legitimate, more valuable for these people to talk about. And there is no, hey, choose this city over this, this city. It is truly, hey, here are these opportunities in all of these cities. What are your feedback? What can we discuss here? And it's up to them to decide based on their internal metrics and their decision-making what they're going to want to do.
Full of questions tonight. The other metric that I was confused about too, is you went to a 15 mile radius. You know, I'm in healthcare, I also have a retail component. I mean, I have patients that come to me for an hour, from an hour away. How did you decide to just stop at 15 miles? And, you know, could that radius be expanded and make us more marketable? Because, you know, rural folks are used to driving for services, especially, you know, retail services.
So each of those are, each retailer has their own specific as to what they, they have a formula where they know what works for them. They know how many miles out they can go. And it really is from the spot in the dirt that they're going to be looking for. And so five, 10 to 15 is the most common mileage that the national retailers that we're talking to look for. But if it were a retailer who wanted to say, hey, what about, what is 30 miles out look like? Or what is an hour out look like? We have the technology and the data that we could pull that and provide that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Two thoughts jumping off of that. The first is the custom trade area really expands that and does show for of a population because it does show who comes to Walmart. And we can pull that from any national retailers needed in the, in the city. And the second part of that, talking about, you know, the regional draw of Hermiston comes from our one-on-one conversations with these retailers. We can send them data, we can send them information all day long. They can look at all their data and information all day long. But if in our conversations, we can share, you know, Hermiston is really kind of the last major stop as you're heading south. That is a really great draw. Or if we can show, share, hey, you know, AWS and many other industries are making their home here, bringing hundreds of homes over the next couple of years, that's very valuable. Or saying, hey, you know, this is a major, this is a medical hub for, for, for the area. Those sorts of one-on-one conversations that we have with people are, what, what would also help move the needle.
Yeah. Cause you know, five mile radius in New York City or Portland even, a lot different than, you know, here in rural parts of the world. States are big out here versus the East Coast. Travel, travel ways out here.
And we will provide a PDF of this for Mark. So you'll have all the data.
Perfect. How about other questions? Yeah, David.
I think you, some of your earlier questions kind of answered this, but we, you talked about keeping Hermiston top of mind for when people are looking to develop in Eastern Oregon. What are steps that retail strategies takes to maybe say, well, have you thought about Hermiston? If they haven't been thinking about Eastern Oregon?
Yeah. So kind of like, kind of like what we discussed earlier. A lot of it is site specific, a lot of it is VPD vehicles per day specific, a lot of it is population specific. And a lot of it goes from these development targets. Do these retailers have distribution to the area? Can they actually get here? So Aldi is a wonderful example. They're not distributing, they don't have distribution north of Fresno, California. And so we can keep, we can touch, you know, reach out to Aldi as much as we want. And they're going to say, we can't go here, right? And so it really is just pleasant persistence. That's kind of our method is keeping a running list of retailers that we believe could be a fit for the market and just making sure that we don't let, allow this to slip through the cracks because it might be a no now, but it's not a no, it might not be a no next year. But we're not going to know that unless we continue conversations and say, hey, what about Hermiston? How are, where are you at on Hermiston? And that's, that's core part of our method is instead of, you know, Mark and Byron or the city having to do that, we continually will follow up, hey, where are you at on this market? Or if someone has expressed interest and they're doing a market study or a market review, hey, where are you at in this market review? Those sorts of things. And, and again, I think it's really important to note that we can bring people to the market all day long. But if there's not a deal or a site for them to go on, they can't do a deal. And everyone's just kind of sitting waiting, right? And so it, it, it depends on if and how and when the right site were to come up, depending on who we, we touch and who we reach out to. But even if they don't have a site, we still make sure to keep, keep interest because, you know, we could, we could string together a new retail development or new shopping center or something along those lines.
And I was just going to note on that as well, he mentioned Aldi, they're not operating in Oregon currently, but that's an example of we are continuously reaching out to them as well. And then what that will do is if and when they are operating in Oregon, they have some huge expansion goals before 2028. And then when they're looking at where in Oregon they may want to go, it's like, oh, retail strategies keeps staying in Hermiston when they send us stuff. So it's kind of just, again, planting the seed early. We can't control where they're expanding or when they're expanding, but we can keep putting these sites in front of them so that if and when that time comes, they know that it's there.
Yeah. Councilor.
Well, thank you for your continued persistence. I appreciate the, the questioning of the mayor and the, and the council as well. This is not the first time that we've seen you guys before, the council before. And so presentation looks very much the same. I know that the persistences and building those relationships and the ongoing communication is, is what's going to set us apart and hopefully keep a lot of these retail businesses, at least Hermiston in their minds. And so I appreciate the questioning because I myself have also wondered, you know, you look for our best interests, but I know that there's plenty of clients that are maybe similar city, maybe similar profiled. And so again, though, I appreciate the consistent work that you guys are doing. It's clear that there's been benefits from the work that you guys have, have done. And we've seen that in our community already. And I look forward to continuing to working with you guys and seeing more of these projects come to fruition. Thank you.
Councilor.
Yes, I have a question. Are there any barriers that are impeding businesses from coming to our area?
I would say, and, and Mayor, you, you referenced this earlier. Nothing on the city's side or in the city's control have we heard people fight against. So that's a really good thing.
Yeah.
It, the barriers we usually run into are either site specific. Again, the right site's not available or a property owner is not ready and willing to work a deal. It can be vehicles per day. Hey, there's not enough traffic on Highway 395. Some, some retailers have pretty insane requirements. It could be, we need a side on a corner with a red light and right now there's nothing. It could be household income, it could be population, all those sorts of things. It could be, as, as I mentioned a second ago, distribution, it could be franchisees. So th- those are the typical things that we run into. And it really is a, a real estate game as far as retail real estate goes into play. And we always, we always say, if you can't, if you can't be patient, then you can't go into commercial real estate. And so those are, those are the typical barriers that we've seen. But it's the barriers that everyone deals with across the nation, right? As, as far as working to attract retail. I think whenever we see interesting or good things happen, it usually comes with grants or incentives or funding or express permitting or those sorts of things. And again, nobody has, has run into any issues from our knowledge with the city. But those are typical ways that those barriers might could get or be, be gotten around.
Mayor, if I could follow up, the reason why I ask is because I know, just looking at the timeline, you say that sometimes it can take anywhere from three and a half years. That's a long time. And it's important for those that are listening or in the audience to know that if things aren't happening, it's not because, you know, something is not being done, but it's just, like you say, there are certain things that are out of our control. You know, it, it depends a lot on the commercial side, what they, you know, what their vision is and what they want to see in the area. So that's why I ask because like I wouldn't have known that. A lot of the times that we hear, well, they should bring this, they should bring that. But, you know, the work is being done, but they're waiting for the right moment to make their move, if they're going to make a move.
Absolutely. And every, every single deal is unique. Every single Starbucks you see has a story that goes back most likely years. There's, there's a deal that, that I've been involved in for four years that has died three times in another market. And it might come back to life, but right now it's, it's not. So, you know, it's, it's just, it's very situational and very. So, you know, it's, it's just, it's very situational and very dependent on a lot of people and a lot of places.
Okay. So I've, I've got the top five wish list, right?
Let's go.
So these are the ones I hear on the street all the time.
Okay.
We want a Chipotle. We want Italian food. We want Applebee's. We want a Costco. And we want another grocery store option like Fred Meyer. So those are the ones I hear on the street all the time. So I don't know about the city, how many you've heard of those, but those are probably the ones I hear the top anyway. So we appreciate you guys coming and giving us an update. Uh, it's always good to see you. Thanks for your hard work for us out there and being our representatives and, and trying to bring more retail options to our community. Community needs to know that we're trying. You know, they're always like, why can't you guys bring this in? Why can't you do this? We're trying. It takes time and it takes to putting the right partners and the piece of property together. So thank you very much for bringing, being here tonight.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you all.
So Byron, um, should we adjourn?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Let's adjourn the work session. All right. If everybody can grab a seat. All four of us. All right. We are going to call the Hermiston City Council meeting for Monday, October 14th, as you order, without a declaration of a quorum. So now what? Mr. Tubby or Mr. Smith?
Yeah. So since without a quorum, you can't take any action. What we're suggesting would be that we do the two presentations at the beginning of the agenda. And then we adjourn the meeting and we'll move all this business to the next.
Okay. Can we still take um, public input?
Yeah, you could do that as well. If there's anybody here that wanted to.
So we will go number eight through 13. We'll put off to the next meeting. Maybe we could do some council updates if the council has something they want to update us with. Can't do a council update? Okay. Okay. So eight through 14, we will put off to the next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah. Counselor McCarthy, you have another question about that?
You've answered that with the um, eight through 14, but I'm just curious, it doesn't seem like um, item number 12, since it's a discussion, would need a quorum. So I'm curious whether or not that's something we could talk about now and maybe bring back to it.
Probably other counselors are going to want to hear that too.
Well, I was thinking maybe have a second meeting.
So you wanted to duplicate everything he's going to report tonight? So we'll put that one off too. All right.
I, I can put some more of that in writing and send it out to everybody as well.
Yeah, that could come out in a, in a Friday report. You can tune in later. The recorded version. All right. So we're going to move on to the presentations. First up, Mr. Davis, introduction of youth advisory council. Excited to have you guys back again this year. Yay.
Oh, thank you. That was for me right now, my students.
No, for them. Well, we need your leadership to make sure that they show up and that this is active and engaging at the high school. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, it's my honor to be here. My name's Aaron Davis. I'm a teacher at Hermiston High School, social studies teacher. Uh, we're in really year three. It's, you know, four years ago, we, you know, we started during COVID. We had lots of free time during that time. So Mr. Smith and I uh, started, you know, coming together and what is this going to be? And then once we got back from COVID and we had our first full year, uh, really started to build the program. And I love where this is going. Um, I'm really sad. I got a bunch of seniors here that are graduating this year. So they've been with us, you know, Janine, Janine's been here for three years since the beginning. And so I got to build the new program up. I got a couple of underclassmen that we're working with uh, as well. But absolutely love this group, love this city council, this opportunity for these kids to have their voices heard. You know, I always tell these students, um, so many teachers at the high school are from Hermiston. Like if, if you really look around, we got a lot of teachers, that teacher that went off to college, you know, and then they come back, right? And so even though you think I'm getting the heck out of here, uh, you know, once I graduate, they always come back. They always come back. It's a great place to live, great place to raise your kids, great opportunities, uh, great teachers. So uh, hopefully their input isn't lost and they can go off and graduate and go to college and learn some skills and come back eventually and see all of their, you know, hard work will hopefully uh, pay off. So uh, they're going to come up here and introduce their, uh, themselves, what uh, committees they're on. I am going to speak on behalf of Aspen Inners, uh, and uh, Kate Doherty. They're at Slow Pitch Softball tonight. Where are they playing at, Miss Rusher?
They were playing at home.
You think they're back yet? Should we give them a call?
They, they lost. They're probably in the mud wars right now.
Oh, well, they're at Mud Wars. Ooh. That's fine. Okay. Anyway, so uh, those two are on planning commission and city council. So other y- youth advisory council members, come up here, introduce yourself. While they're coming up, uh, our big goal this year, uh, in January, we have a statewide uh, uh, youth advisory council conference in Salem. And so we're working towards that, see what other communities and schools are doing. Definitely learn from them and make those, those connections as well. So, say your first and last name and what committees you're on. If you forget, I brought the paper right here. Okay.
And you guys might have to pull that microphone down.
My name is Rebecca Godoy and I'm on the city, city council committee and the Hispanic advisory committee.
Awesome. Welcome.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Flor and I'm in the city council committee and I'm a senior in high school. So.
Okay, welcome.
Hello, my name is Aviana Navahar. I'm in the city council committee, the Hispanic um, advisory council, right? Yeah. Hispanic advisory and I'm a junior that's here.
Okay, welcome.
Hi, my name is Sarai Gutierrez Ayala. I'm a senior in high school and I am on the city council and Hispanic advisory committee.
Excellent. Welcome.
I'm in AC Press and I'm on the city council and the Parks and Rec and I'm a senior in high school.
All right. Welcome back. Third year?
Second.
Second year. Okay.
Hey, uh, one last thing too. All of these seniors are in my AP US government and politics course as well. So they're getting a lot of Mr. Davis, a lot of civic engagement, your vote matters, but you know, voter efficacy, all this stuff. So we get to have these conversations in the classroom as well. So phenomenal.
Civic education? Is that engaging with this classroom too?
Well, we're working on a plan to do that. Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we need more civic education.
Yes.
It's like gone away.
We've had conversations with our civics teachers. We've got four other teachers that teach civics to all the other seniors. And so we've had those conversations with those teachers and Mr. Smith as well.
Awesome. Well, thank you again for your leadership on this and helping keep students engaged and involved in city governance. It's important. We're trying to build the, the future for them.
Absolutely. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Have fun tonight, ladies. I know you guys are going to the mud wars after this, so. All right. Up next is an update from Hermiston School District. And I see Mr. Larry Usher out there tonight.
How are you guys?
Welcome.
I, I get to miss mud wars tonight, by the way, as well. But uh, got a few, three counselors and two of them are school district employees. So this may not be huge news for everybody in the room, but everybody over here, maybe it will be. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, I always enjoy getting the opportunity to come in here and speak with everybody. So a few updates, uh, some of them that, that Jake Bacon shared with me. And then we'll get into some of the athletics that I know uh, is going on. It's a busy week with homecoming week for us this week. So a couple of big updates. Portland Opera will be here in Hermiston, uh, October 17th. The opera will be performing at Hermiston High School. Uh, Ed Foundation sponsored this event. It's a great event for the community. If anybody wants to come out and attend. Seven to eight PM is when the Portland Opera will be performing in the auditorium at Hermiston High School, again, on the 17th. Uh, our drama performance is coming up. The fall performance of Radium Girls will begin this week, excuse me, next week, October 25th. Then no Saturday performance, but then we go Wednesday, October 30th, and then November 1st and November 2nd. And there will be a matinee on Sunday, the 2nd, and then the evening showing at 7:00 PM. Uh, excited.
Uh, excited for those coming up soon with four of those performance of our drama production of radium girls. And then the reason they don't have that performance on Saturday, the 26th, is we have Dancing with the Hermison Stars coming up on Saturday, the 26th. We've got, uh, all kinds of great staff members that are participating in Dancing with the Hermison Stars. I know that I continually get fundraising requests coming through my email nonstop about all the fundraisers and some pretty darn creative fundraisers. At that, so, uh, people are looking to raise a lot of funds for all of our groups in the community. It's pretty exciting. Um, Dia de los Muertos is coming up at the high school. They're going to be hosting it over at Eotech, I believe, on November 1st from six to eight PM. Yes, it is at Eotech. Music, dancing, food, all kinds of great stuff going on, uh, right now, working to get some of our other high school groups, maybe some of our athletic teams and some of our clubs at the high school, involved in some of the stuff that's going on over Eotech on November 1st. Excited about that. Always, one of the highest attended events that we have in our community. It's great to see our community get involved in Dia de los Muertos is really cool for our kids. A couple of updates as well. Um, any parents in the room probably know this already, but the district, uh, moved our communication to parent square. Uh, I, I myself was a little apprehensive on the athletic side because we, we use team app so much on the athletic side to communicate with all of our kids and our families. Um, but I was happy to find out that, and if you guys aren't familiar, team app is just an app we get and then you can choose. For those of you that have kids that play sports know that you choose, you can have the baseball app, the softball app, the basketball app. Well, I have 27 of them on my cell phone. And now I'm really excited about parent square because I don't get 65 notifications a day. I only get the ones that I subscribe to. So it's really cool. It's a great, new communication device. It's going to replace all of the other ones that we had out there at our elementary schools and in all of our programs as well. Uh, the other, the, the big benefit of parent square is that when your kids have grown and gone, they're no longer in the school, like Mr. Dratsman, you may still get, notifications from team app if you're still on there from when I coached Gavin in basketball. I don't know, but the, every year we just load new parents and new kids into parent square. So when they move from the elementary to the high school, you're not going to continually get elementary school notifications. You're going to get new ones. And so, it's a great app and a great way to communicate with our families in the community. Um, a couple of other items, uh, parent view, we're still working to get our parents loaded on parent view, which is a way for parents to log into, uh, synergy to take a look at grades and attendance and they can get, uh, push notifications for grades and attendance as well. When grades drop below a certain level, you get a notification. When your students miss class, you get a notification. Um, and so we're still working to get as many parents as we can on parent view. And we have the same being the transportation director for the bus company. It's called First View, which is an app that I think I might have shared with you guys last year when we switched over to First Student. It's an app that our parents can load on their phones. I actually have it on my phone as well and you can put in your student's bus route and you can actually create a geomap for that bus. And so when that bus gets a half a mile from your home or when that bus gets a half a mile from the school, it will send you a notification. Or at a certain time, it will send you a notification letting you know. On the school side, First View is phenomenal because it allows me to log in and I can see in real time where any one of our 42 bus routes is and anytime, it gives us, uh, it drops a pin every time the bus stops and opens the door. So we know whether or not kids got picked up and where they got picked up and what time they got picked up. So, uh, this was another one of the, the, the great, um, selling points, I guess, that, that First Student had for us with the technology they have that allows us to keep our kids safe and on time for school. So it helps us tremendously. Athletics and activities, um, it is homecoming week, really excited. Uh, it's been a fun fall. We started off on September 13th. I don't know if, if many of you are in attendance, we had our salute to service night, kind of the first night, first time we've done this in our football program. I noticed that when I went to the state AD conference last year, some of the schools on the west side had done a salute to service. So, uh, I began last spring, reaching out to Oregon Army National Guard, uh, to find out what we could do to, um, recognize our active members, uh, in the military and our veterans in our community. Uh, and boy, did they jump on board and had, I mean, at first they, they asked me if we wanted to have an F-15 flyby, uh, for our national anthem. And I told them, why not? Heck yeah, we would do it. And, and, and actually, it was going to happen and then FAA wouldn't approve it, but it was going to be incredible to do that. Uh, so we did, we did get a helicopter flyby, which was incredible. We had all kinds of great activities going on that evening, uh, over at the stadium to recognize our active duty members and our military veterans on September 13th, and we're looking to do that again in the future. It'll be a lot of fun. We are just about, the boosters have just about completed construction of the indoor baseball, softball and golf hitting facility. Uh, I would encourage you to give me a call or shoot me an email if you'd like to come by and take a look at it. It's a, it's a beautiful building. Uh, 120 by 60, when you get inside, it's all white, so it looks twice that big when you get inside, but, uh, we're just getting ready to, to, uh, get all the HVAC in it and then we're going to put nets and start hitting. So we're hoping about a month from now that all of our kids, baseball, softball and golf will be in that building hitting. It'll be a, a great addition to our athletic program and our community. Slow pitch softball started playoffs tonight, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, they lost 13 to 11 in eight innings to Shadow Park. It was a heartbreaker. We led the entire way until the top of the eighth. Uh, and obviously the seventh, they tied it up, top of the eighth, they took the lead. They'll be back at home on Wednesday night. It's getting to be close to playoff times. Volleyball will start postseason on November 5th. Excited that our volleyball team was recognized by the WIAA as the team of the month for the month of September. Very exciting that they were the WA team of the month. They had a great month of September. Uh, we spent about two weeks in first place at six and one. I think we were four and one, five and one, six and one in the, uh, in the MCC. Had a tough week last week, losing to Richland, Kamayak and Kennewick, but we still have a shot at second place in the league. So our girls have had a good season. District cross country will begin November 2nd for both boys and girls in Walla Walla. Currently our boys are in second place, our girls are in third, but there's a number one 3A team in the conference. We got a really good shot at getting both our boys and girls entire teams to state this year. We're excited about that. Um, our boys are currently ranked number eight in the state right now in the WIAA. Uh, district swim, November 1st and 2nd, again in Walla Walla, which is new and it's good for us. Normally, I know this doesn't make sense, but normally our swimmers combine with district four for postseason and we send them to Kelso for district swimming every year. Uh, for boys and then, or for girls and then boys again in the wintertime, but we're excited that we're going to have our own district for district, uh, for the MCC, excuse me. Um, the, uh, the greatest Spokane league won't even be sending girls down to swim, but we're going to be doing that in Walla Wall and keeping our own bids to state. So hopefully we get some girls in the state swim meet. This week with homecoming, as I again mentioned earlier, mud wars is tonight, which is, uh, a fun night. It's a lot of fun. Uh, we probably have, I know last year we had probably more than 500 kids and several parents down at mud wars behind the stadium, um, right now. And I think I saw the bracket, we had 16 teams signed up for the tug of war. And, uh, I think they had to cut it off at 16. We probably would have had 25 or 30, but we got a lot of kids down there. Uh, we started a tradition a few years ago that the mud wars do not begin until a senior football player takes a dive into the mud pit. So, I reminded Andy Hall when I left that don't forget, mud wars do not begin until one of them dives into that cold mud pit and the pit's about four feet deep. So hopefully they can dig them out of there. Uh, tomorrow night is boys volleyball, following the girls volleyball match. And then Wednesday night, uh, is powder puff football at six PM in the stadium, uh, which, uh, I think our boys football players have as much fun coaching the girls as they have playing. And then, uh, Friday, I'm so excited. We have a noise parade on Friday night. Now this has grown. Uh, and I know that you guys, uh, have had some meetings about parades in the community, along with Chief Edmiston, and we've communicated with him and our resource officer as well. Our noise parade as of this morning was sitting at 28 floats. Uh, and I'm not going to be surprised for those last minute programs, uh, in our district that want to get involved. It was sitting at 28 floats and, um, I wouldn't be surprised if it's pushing close to 38 by Friday, but it begins at five o'clock. I'm not going to be surprised if we have enough, kind of like the county parade that it's over for the first float before it even starts for the last one. We'll find out. They are going to begin at five o'clock, uh, out of the Weber Field parking lot. They're going to circle all the way around the block, around West Park, uh, and then back by Weber and then drop all the students off in front of the main gym, or we'll have a tailgate party ready to go at six PM, uh, 5:30 PM, excuse me, for our kids before they go into the game. So we are really excited about that. Almost every one of our clubs, activities and sports in the building is involved in the noise parade. It's going to be really, really cool and a good time for our kids. So. That's what I got. Any questions?
Awesome. So mud wars, where, where do you guys put the mud pit now?
The mud pit is actually right behind the visitors bleachers in the stadium. So it's been there, uh, uh, ever since we put those new bleachers in eight years ago, we, and, and obviously ever since we lost the rodeo grounds, it's been there. Um, United Reynolds and Michael Ramirez comes and sets up lights for some safety. We have music out there and we turn on the lights in the softball field and in the football stadium, but, uh, kids have a great time. It's a lot of fun and the bonfire is right next to it.
Cool. The other question I had for you, that app that tracks the buses. First view?
First view.
So, how do I know if my kid got on the bus? Do they have some sort of scan? No.
No.
That would be great.
That, wouldn't that be nice?
Yes.
Um, what we do know.
Made the bus.
What, what we do know i- is this, is that we, we frequently get phone calls and, and, and Mrs. Ron and I even communicate once in a while when, when some of my monolingual parents will call and say, hey, the bus didn't come to pick up my son or daughter. And you know, sometimes that happens or the bus was early, which it should not be, or sometimes the bus was late. Sometimes the bus shows up and believe it or not, uh, you weren't out of bed to get on the bus because mom and dad were going to work. And so I can actually pull up the app and say, no, actually the bus stopped at your house at 7:45 AM. The door opened in front of your house at 7:45 AM. Uh-oh, we, we didn't get on the bus, but no, it doesn't actually tell us which kids are on the bus. Um, the, uh, but it, but it tells us when it gets to that stop, when it stops there and how long it stays at that stop and then when it takes off and goes to the next stop.
Cool.
Good information for us.
Good information. Other questions for Mr. Rusher? Yeah. Counselor Brown?
Not a question, but a comment. The, the hitting facility looks amazing. Um, and, uh, the only thing I think of when I pass by it is I think it would be really cool if there was either a giant, a logo of the bulldog or something like home of the bulldogs or something like that, but it looks prime for either some messaging or, or a logo. I think that would make it pop a little bit.
Yeah, we're going to get something put up on there, uh, with our school logo on it and, um, on the inside as well. The inside right now, like I said, is just completely white. It's, it makes it look big, but we're going to get some, uh, some messaging on the inside as well. Um, the other thing we got to get on the outside is we got to get a net that protects that thing on the outside because right next to Weber Field, it's going to catch a lot of foul balls. And so, uh, we, we don't want it to get it destroyed. We, we've toured some hitting facilities. Uh, one down in Bend, there's one in Hood River that we went and looked at and they were similar buildings and they were next to their baseball field and they were just destroyed with foul balls. I mean, doesn't hurt the inside of the building, but the outside doesn't look very good and you, you don't want to have that happen. So. Appreciate it.
Counselor Ron?
I will email Mrs. Bemrose, but, um, just wanted to also thank her in public for sending us, uh, a ticket to be able to attend, uh, the show radium, uh, girls. So you have that in your envelope.
I don't have an envelope.
Oh, okay. Well, sorry.
Then you don't get to go.
Sorry.
Actually have to buy mine. Is that what she's telling me?
I've got connections. All right.
I'm sure it's going to be a great program. I think my wife's already got tickets. So I, I'm hoping that I'll be at slow pitch state softball in Yakima the night of the performances. So that's my hope.
I think one of your principals daughters has got the leading role in that.
I think so.
Howie Smith.
Who is it?
Um, Smith or, um, Wyatt.
Oh, yeah.
Piley, is it Piley Wyatt?
Uh, yes, it is. Stephanie Wyatt's daughter. Yeah, Stephanie, I know helps with every time we have one of the productions, she's down there helping out. Yeah. Yeah. So does my wife goes down and takes gate at all the productions and volunteers to help out as well. Sometimes with their meals, she just likes to get involved.
Very good. Any other questions, counsel? Always good to see you, Mr. Rusher.
Thanks. You too.
Yeah.
Take care. You guys probably have a short meeting. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, uh, we're now going to move on to the citizen input. Uh, Mr. Rose, you're the only one in the audience tonight. So any citizen input? Yes, only on non-agenda items, which we don't have an agendas. All right. So anything else, Mr. Smith, for the good of the order? Nope. Hopefully, Counselor McCarthy, see you in Bend. Counselor Brown, are you going to Bend? Ron? Nope. Okay. Okay, we'll have a good representation down there. So we'll go down and stand strong for Hermison. All right. Thank you guys this evening and, uh, we'll adjourn. Meeting change.
Yeah, so we have Veterans Day is on the Monday, the 11th. We were going to move it to, ask to move it to Tuesday, the 12th.
Well, that was a council action though.
Right, but it can still take place at the next meeting. It'll be before that.
Okay, so be thinking about that if that works out for everybody. November 12th? Right. Yeah, I, I will be going. I'll be going to Tampa. So. NLC meetings. Yeah, hopefully they're still there. All right, nothing else? Okay, we are adjourned.